Welcome everybody to this special session of the Wonka World Conference 2021. This special session is about universal health coverage and my name is Professor Amanda Barnard. I'm from Australia and along with Professor Chris Van Wheel, who many of you will know as the past president of Wonka, we're chairing this session of four very distinguished speakers speaking on this topic. All the speakers are going to present and we'll have a panel discussion at the end. We are very, very keen to get the questions that all of you will have about this very important topic to us as family physicians. And we encourage you to put your questions in the Q and A section on your screen and we will get those and present them to the panelists at the end. So without further ado, I would like to hand you over to Professor Chris Van Wheel to introduce our first speaker.
Thank you very much Amanda and it gives me great pleasure to introduce as our first speaker, a very distinguished person from WHO, Dr. Salam Hassan, who is educated at Harvard, but more importantly, he is a very experienced staff member of WHO with a very strong feelings about primary care, very supportive for us, but also with a very critical mind to understand what is and what is not important in our discipline. So without much ado, I would like to hand over to Hassan to you for your presentation on universal health coverage.
Hello everybody. My brief presentation is about universal health coverage in our region, the Eastern Mediterranean region. In which I'm going to focus on three main topics. The first one is dealing with an overview for the universal health coverage in the EMR. Second is about the key challenges facing universal health coverage. And the third is about the priorities and the recommended action toward universal health coverage by the year of 2030. We are talking about nine years from now. As a background, most probably already familiar with this, and this is dealing with the Sustainable Development Goal, which actually adopted in the United Nations back to the year of 2015 under the title of 2030 Agenda for the Sustainable Development Goal. Goal number three is about the good health and well-being and the target number 3.8, it is about universal health coverage. What is the situation of the universal health coverage? Still in our region, the UHT16 basic health service, around 40% of our population, they don't have an access to this 16 basic health service, which is actually very high comparing to the global numbers. By the way, this is the most updated data and the data for the 2019 is going to be released in December, this coming December, within a couple of weeks during the World Universal Health Day on December 12. The universal health coverage actually is facing a serious challenge in our region. And in June, a couple of months ago, we published our report about the progress on the 50 health-related Sustainable Development Goal. And actually, this report identified the many challenges facing Sustainable Development Goal. Mainly about the weak governance, this is very serious challenge. In addition to the fragmentation of the healthcare system and the availability of the data, there is a serious challenge about the limitation for the data availability, countries under the emergency and the gender equality and the health disparities. Let us go in more detail about these challenges facing our region to reach to universal health coverage. The most important challenge is the impact of emergencies, fragile and humanitarian setting. Our region for the Eastern Mediterranean region is the home to more than 100 million people that they need the humanitarian assistance. This is very serious challenge. In addition to this, around in the range of 49% of the whole world refugees, in addition to the 44% of the whole internal displaced globally are from our region. This is the most serious challenge facing our region to reach to universal health coverage within the coming nine years. The second one is about the weak governance. Our region is fully committed to the universal health coverage, all the countries are actually committed. But on the other side, still there is a weak technical capacities for the ministries of health to formulate the policies toward effective universal health coverage. This is the second serious challenges facing our region. To start with, our region for the Eastern Mediterranean, actually they are very low investor in health. We keep talking about the primary healthcare, that how it is very important for the universal health coverage. But on the other side, the government is spending on the primary healthcare, it may drop to just only 5%. And the most of the budget around between 50 until it reached to around say 80% of the government health budget, it may go to the hospital. Even with this huge budget to the hospital, still it is, it may reach between 12 until around 18% of the healthcare associated with infection. And this is, by the way, this is the highest in the world. 8% of the impatient cases experience adverse event, which we call it the medical error. And the main reason for this, because almost around say 50% of the countries, almost 10 countries in our region, they don't have infection prevention control problem. Because of the limited budget directed to the primary healthcare sector and the weak referral system, in addition to the limited quality, this it ends to around say 80 up to reach to 90% of the hospital case actually are treatable at the primary healthcare level. Around the 90% of the primary healthcare facilities, they don't have full comprehensive essential medicine list. Just only 10% of them, they have this essential medicine list. And the antibiotics usually they are provided for almost 70% of the primary healthcare prescriptions. This is very, very serious. Family practice in our regions facing serious problem, the main reason for this, because the shortage of the family physician and the 93% of the physician working at the primary healthcare level, they are generalists, they are not a general practitioner and they are not a family physician. The essential service package in most of the countries, it is kind of an implicit one versus to be an explicit one. 80% of the countries, 80% of the countries, they don't provide treatment, comprehensive treatment for the non-combinational diseases at the level of the primary healthcare. Such situation, at least that the diabetes prevalence in our region, it is the highest globally. All these facts actually leads to that the private health sector taking the lead in the service delivery and on average it reached to around say 66% of the service are provided by the health sector provider with very high out of pocket in our region. Above all of this situation and since March of the last year for the 2020 COVID pandemic impact came. And in a recent study to the World Bank, it mentioned that for each COVID deaths, more than two women and their children had lost their lives because of the disruption to the health systems. Talking about disruption of the health system and in particular for the service delivery, it reached to more than 70% of the service has been disrupted, this is back to early 2020, which was the highest globally. Recently, during this 2021, we conducted the same assessment and we found that it reached to just only 30%, which is much way better situation now. But the problem, it is not about interruption of the services only. Now we are in the era for the COVID-19 vaccination. Still around 25% of the countries in our region, it reached less than 10% of the population, they receive the vaccine. Again, this is very serious challenges in our region. Let us move to the last part of my presentation and it's talking about the priorities, recommended action toward universal health coverage by the year of 2030. Political stability and the ending of the conflict, this is top priority for us. Without having good political stability and the ending of the conflict, it will continue universal health coverage for many countries and their population to be as a dream for this population and this countries. On the left side of the screen, you can find that all the countries already committed to the global compact and to the universal health coverage 2030, this is on the left side. And on the right side, this is what I got from the internet, which actually presents the tensions between the countries in our region and the cutting of the diplomatic relation. And definitely this situation affects the development in general and universal health coverage in particular. Again, without having political stability and the ending of the conflicts between the countries, this will continue, the issue for the universal health coverage will continue as a dream for most of the populations in our region. The second important topic that as I mentioned, that the countries are committed to the universal health coverage, but many countries in our region, they are not clear what model of care they are going to use. And I mean by the model of care, not only the service delivery, but in addition to this, we are talking about the governance, about the finance, about the technology, about the information system. All of these things, they take us an idea about the model of care. And the World Health Assembly back to the last year for the 2020, they already adopted and approved operational framework for the primary healthcare and delivery. This is including the level number five, which is talking about the model of care. What do you mean exactly by the model of care? The model of care give us a kind of conceptualization of how the service should be delivered. And this is including the management of the population, management of the service in addition to the selection and organization of the service. The third important topic that primary healthcare partners, they need to work together through the global action plan. And I mean by the primary healthcare partners, this is including the WHO, UNICEF, UNAIDS, UNHCR, UNIPAC and our colleagues from the Arab Board of Health Specialization and of course our colleague from Wonka. In which actually were already listed that these four topics of our collaboration for the coming period and actually it started during this year for the 2021 and it's coming and continue in the next phaenomena, Insha Allah. Thank you colleagues and I have around 90 second a video that is talking about the universal health coverage and I would love to share this video with you.
2030, it sounds like years away, but the clock is ticking. Time is short and we have a promise to keep. A promise to ensure all people and communities in all countries receive the health services they need, when and where they need them, without facing financial hardship. But there's still a lot of work to do. At least half of the world's people lack full coverage for essential health services. More than 800 million people spend over 10% of their family budget on health services. And close to 100 million people are pushed into extreme poverty because of healthcare expenses. We cannot accept a world like that. We cannot afford a world like that. That's why countries all over the world are investing in universal health coverage. By enabling communities to make decisions about their own health, like breastfeeding, healthy diets and bed nets. By reaching the most remote villages with life-saving services like vaccines. By building networks of affordable primary care clinics to provide treatment locally for everyday health needs. And by providing more sophisticated services at hospitals for life's ups and downs. The thing is, universal health coverage not only improves health and increases life expectancy, it also reduces poverty, creates jobs, drives inclusive economic growth, improves gender equality and protects countries against epidemics. With investment, every nation can increase its range of health services, expand its health workforce, improve its infrastructure, ensure essential medicines are available and protect people from the cost of paying for care out of their own pockets. We call on the global community to make universal health coverage a political priority so everyone can access quality healthcare without facing financial hardship. If we work together, we can make universal health coverage a reality and ensure a safer, fairer and healthier world for all.
Thank you very much Hassan for this energetic and moving and very realistic presentation. I think we will have a lot of discussion on it, but therefore I now immediately go to our next speaker. I'm very happy to introduce to you Professor Shabir Moussa, who is professor at Witwatersrand University in Johannesburg, but more importantly, has been president of Wonka Africa and has done wonderful things together with the PMAFAMET and the networking in that part of the world. Therefore, who has a better view on universal health coverage in Africa? Shabir, over to you.
Hi, my name is Shabir Moussa. I'm going to talk about UHC in Africa, my experiences, our experiences and perspectives. I'm going to share a little bit about the history of PSC in Africa, the AHIC report, which is really useful and building Afro-PSC as our experience has gotten. So let's start with the building history of PSC in Africa. PSC in Africa is not, you know, just since 1978. In fact, in the 1940s, the CACs had developed community oriented primary care in South Africa and there were other elements of such community orientation across Africa. But 1978 isn't important hallmark or important milestone in Africa. Certainly in the 80s and 90s, despite the Almaata talking of comprehensive healthcare based on the cheap versions of selective PSC, but driven by UNICEF and UNAIDS over the last 20 years or 20 years from 1980s to 2000s, it's been marked by very selective primary healthcare verticalized programs. In 2001, heads of state agreed to the Abuja Declaration of 15% of health spend by 2015. In 2006, there were resolutions by the AU and the WHO Afro about universal healthcare being an important question and basing that on a well-functioning district health service. And they promoted a bottom-up approach. In 2008, the Ogo Dugu Declaration was raised the question of that there's a lot of commitment to primary healthcare, but in action, it's not really coming through. Primary healthcare approach was emphasized once more, the importance of decentralized care, dyssexual collaboration and the whole international nature of primary healthcare being comprehensive, continuous, integrated and community-based was emphasized. But still in that declaration, the statement was made, let's use priority programs as the entry point to strengthen national systems. In fact, in 2012, the roadmap for scaling up human resources in African healthcare did not mention primary healthcare at all, even though it set out six strategic areas for improvement. In 2017, fairly recently, WHO resolutions basically called for a holistic approach to strengthening healthcare systems, moving away from the program-specific approach of the MDG era. And I think that's a major shift and called again for efficient, integrated, person-centered delivery with intersectoral collaboration for SDGs. Certainly the person-centeredness is beginning to grow in the African context slowly. In 2018, at WHO Afro, there were resolutions around financing and importantly, it talked about increasing domestic financing, where many have not achieved their Abuja Declaration. And talked about the need to move out of pocket into prepayment financing systems. And I think that's a very important issue, as well as talking about strategic purchasing and the fact that one needs to move away from dependencies on external financing. So these were important debates in the last few years that have shifted the equation. In 2018, the WHO contribution to the Astana Report basically complained of the challenge of poor decentralization, where not only is the managers on the district level not capable, the managers higher up are actually reluctant to provide the power for human resource management and financial management procurement. And I think this is the problem of chicken and egg in Africa. In 2019, in a report by the WHO on the state of Africa, African health, it talked about worrying situation with underperformance on several levels. And speaking of the WHO building blocks as actually perpetuating a verticalized service and that one needs to somehow move beyond into talking of a intervention that's collaborative and in fact very person-centered. So a PSC performance initiative is certainly a useful framework and in fact, many of the issues within the black box of service delivery are not being dealt with adequately. And particularly the population management approach, which includes empanelment, is not in the lexicon of WHO Afro. Team-based care is there, but still not very clear more about how shifting than actually integrated teamwork. The availability of primary healthcare providers is still a far distance away with primary healthcare itself not being clear as to where it sits, where it stops and where secondary care begins in primary healthcare or in health systems in Africa. And I think the nature of primary healthcare being continuous, collaborative and comprehensive is still a dispute within Africa. And I think one really needs that to compact as we proceed to support African primary healthcare for UHC. So the AHIC report is an important contribution to this debate. Essentially, I was a commissioner in that reported, which is the Africa Health Agenda International Conference and there was a commission called for, with 12 commissioners. And in that, we basically came up with four elements, showed the, you know, represented the performance or assessed the performance, looked at the challenges, the opportunities which we thought important, as well as recommendations. And I'm going to share those elements very briefly with you. In terms of performance, the health outcomes in Africa are improving, but they're still very dismal compared to the global numbers. Effective coverage is very poor, only half of the people, less than half the people in the continent receive what they need in terms of healthcare and then those who do are more rich than poor. And the quality is not adequate. There's also poor risk protection, the financial risk protection. One in 10 persons in Africa actually having a problem, health problem that sends them into poverty, you know, one in 10 people. The context is in fact very challenging. So these are some of the challenges. That we have inadequate economic growth and in fact a high dependency ratio. The number of people in Africa, certainly the number of people depending on those who work is very high. And we are characterized by political instability and wars and the fact that we have really rapid and unplanned urbanization. Climate change is an issue in Africa and we also have the legacy of colonization and neo-colonial influence. And I think these are really important background issues with large corporations as well as governments, foreign governments and institutions, global institutions that push agendas that aren't for the best of African nations. Yes, we do acknowledge that there are serious problems in the health system in that they're poorly managed, the resources are poorly managed, there are weak governance and accountability issues. We have a high burden of disease and there is a really low trust and ownership by the population in their health systems. We do have challenges in the communities of health beliefs and societal practices that can be very challenging. But there are in fact opportunities and these are important to note. The African economic trajectory has been really rapidly growing, the next century maybe the African. And the AU is certainly looking and seeing this as a pro-people union of the nations in Africa. The key milestone for that has been the African Treaty Area, which is basically coming together to bring the single biggest economic block in the world together. And there's a network of traditional healers, healthcare that we need to capitalize on. And there's a strong political commitment that we need to strengthen and also use. And of course, the demographic dividend for the growing population of young people who in fact will contribute to economically in the next century will be quite important to its growth, an important opportunity. There are also other opportunities in the continent with a fairly developed private sector. You know, we have an ecosystem that is supportive of innovation, especially the lack of legacies, problems that exist in other parts of the world and the speed with which we can leapfrog others across the world. There's a strong civil society across Africa and growing in time. We do have well-trained and competent health professionals, even if they do leave the continent. And of course, COVID-19 has also helped us in strengthening health efforts, health strengthening efforts, especially with the AU collaborations. The AHIC report came up with recommendations and I think I was really pushing for this to be at the top, that really we need to reorient the health system towards population of needs, especially prevention and promotion, and that there needs to be a strengthening of the primary healthcare system and prioritization. Healthy in all policies, that investments come to strengthen it, that we actually strengthen health facilities as well as the healthcare delivery and particularly with flexible, non-hierarchical, multi-disciplinary teams made up of clinical and non-clinical staff to provide integrated clinical care or integrated healthcare to defined empanelled populations. And I think this is an important dimension and that these should be, you know, part of not only delivery, but contracting and reimbursement in prepayment models. So this was an important achievement for Wonka Africa in that. Of course, there are other health recommendations, including input self-technologies, quality financing and governance in the AHIC report and these particularly include that there be cross-cutting development strategy, making health that and looking at stakeholder management, especially public-private partnerships and to strengthen community participation. These were all health recommendations for health systems across Africa, but there were also recommendations for government and states to in fact decolonize health policy as an important consideration. Of course, other actions are also important, particularly the demographic dividend and investing in that for the future economically. Well, let me conclude by saying that we are looking at building Afro-PSC as an important step in UHC in Africa. And the Afro-PSC is basically a forum bringing together multidisciplinary primary healthcare team members and workforce stakeholders from across Africa and advocating, supporting each other and advocating for primary healthcare and universal coverage. The Afro-PSC was conceived actually in the Wonka Africa Conference in 2019 and essentially grew through 2020 with a number of workshops and webinars that tried to engage with a whole bundle of stakeholders, importantly trying to bring on board. Uh importantly, trying to bring on board um the um WHO Afro uh as well as all key stakeholders and growing that network. And this certainly has um improved in twenty twenty one this year. We in fact have a number of workshops that have tried to pull together a number of policy threads. Um and in in building on the Afro P H C statement that came in twenty twenty. Um where the wide range of members of the Afro P H C team um agreed that all members of the team are important and that one needs to peel that away um layer by layer uh in trying to build primary healthcare and and in U H C in Africa. Well, um with these collaborative interactive workshops, we formally launched Afro P H C in twenty twenty one with six hundred members from forty countries and a busy developing a position paper on building the P H C team for U H C in Africa. Some of the key ideas is that we need to move away from governments thinking of health systems as driven only by the public service and to think of how to um build in um a much more wider uh stewardship of the public service um through pooling of funds in national health insurance funds or national funds um that are taxed and built through tax and removing and reducing the outer pocket uh in across the content, across the countries. And to be able to get private administrators and private providers in the mix of um help, public health and pub- private sector and non state act, uh non government service providers. So that one can really include in small decentralized units of care, uh even up to ten thousand. Where a doctor can join current clinics and where GPs can actually bring together a team to be able to create impaneled populations of anywhere from ten to twenty thousand to thirty thousand, depending on the African context. And I think there are some key principles behind that, that must be built on teamwork, community orientation, referral support and district coordination and supply side innovation. That this kind of bottom up allows us to be able to bring them together, adding layers of um service that in fact can improve. Uh in addition, that there's easy possibilities to accredit such um units of care, decentralized units of care, where enrollment can occur and cover the entire population based on um reasonable mixes of of population to uh human resources, delta submission easily through payment uh sis- through uh simple payment management systems, peer review and training that would eventually lead to um practices that in fact can be across the coun- uh the country and the continent. Uh where there's a strong population management by community health workers linked to clinics where there's a reoriented of the reorientation of the team from above managers above to population below using mixed capitation systems and where there's stakeholder collaboration and targeted health promotion. Um I think that these are the various options and I think that there's more on advancing primary healthcare in Africa at the website of the Afro P H C. I hope this has been useful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shabir, for sharing these important experiences from Africa. And it's uh very impressive to hear both the E M R and the African experiences and uh from E M R and Africa, we now move to South Asia. And I'm delighted to introduce to you Raman Kumar, Dr. Raman Kumar, who is the past president of Wonka South Asia. He's also the president of the Indian Academy of Family Physicians. And who better knows the situation in South Afri- South South Asia than than he? So over to you, Raman.
Hello, delegates. Greetings from India, South Asia. I'm Dr. Raman Kumar. I'm the president of Wonka South Asia region. And I'll be giving you a brief update on experiences, perspective from South Asia and universal health coverage. So this is part of our bigger panel discussions that we are holding in the global health perspective. And this is what South Asia looks like. We have countries like Pakistan, India, Nepal, Bhutan, Bangladesh, Sri Lanka and Maldives. And we are a quarter of human population, we are a small Wonka region though. And we see a lot of global disparities, inequities, inequalities, unmet needs under developer family medicine in primary care because of the special situation of high population and high population density. And this is what the map looks like and this is where we are located. And there is pressing needs for program like universal health coverage from South Asian perspective when uh this region has been trying to catch up globally on universal health coverage. And it has been, of course, impacted during past three years because of the global pandemic. Because especially the second wave of pandemic severely impacted our region. And because of the pandemic, most of the funding uh healthcare uh planning priorities have taken focus on COVID management and in a way uh uh the universal health agenda has been slightly delayed, I would say, because of the pending especially. But now the uh the pandemic is settling down, it looks like, although we are still passing through the pandemic. We never know what will happen in coming two, three, six months. But uh at the moment, it is settling and then again uh uh we are uh trying to uh uh engage uh with the universal health coverage agenda of the region. Uh uh in South Asia, I would like to share that the first wave was not that strong, but second one wave was really, really very bad. It impacted whole of the, uh not only health system people, uh but also it has the impacted the whole of the uh economy. And it has severely adversely impacted the evolving uh universal health coverage agenda. So this is the current situation as of today, this is fourteen days back. It looks much better in South Asia as compared to uh America or Europe, Russia. But it was very, very bad couple of months back in the months of April and May when we had second wave. So we are coming out of it and uh uh I have opportunity to attend the the W H U Regional Committee Meetings of Southeast Asia Region. And from there, I can say that universal health coverage is a still a priority area. And you can see priority issues or as they were discussed during the past three uh regional committee meetings. So if you look at uh number three point annual report on monitoring progress of U N S D S C and health related S T Gs. So this was discussed during one of the committee meetings. And other uh uh priority areas of our W H U region have also been regularly monitored in spite of the COVID challenge. So you can see it is still in the focus, though slightly uh delayed, I would say. And uh this is what uh is all universal health coverage about in South Asia region. It is from WHO page and uh as we all know, universal health coverage has two dimensions, access to needed healthcare and financial protection. And uh region has an essential health services index of sixty one in two thousand nineteen as compared to forty six percent in two thousand ten, which is improving. And strategies are in place and uh it is evolving, it is work in progress. And every country is committed, uh what I can see, irrespective of the financial situations. And I'll share this screen. Uh this is from World Bank Group. And it is the index of universal health coverage and the values you can see. Uh the best one from Sri Lanka, Maldives uh and Bhutan, because these are relatively small countries. Here is a scoring fifty five, slightly better than other countries. And we do have, you know, other challenges, political instability, uh other uh problems in our region, uh financial of course. And this uh report is from two thousand seventeen, so we are ahead of this by around four, five years. Though we have lost around two, three years in pandemic again. But I think we have been making steady progress. I briefly discuss uh about two countries, Sri Lanka, the best performing, and India, because we have a huge population to cover and unique in its uh requirements, so they that may be of interest to a wider global audience. So this is again, you see, all global organizations are focusing towards universal health coverage. You see NSF uh accepting progress was universal health coverage in South Asia in the era of COVID nineteen. So Sri Lanka is one of the most advanced uh health systems and um largely praised for their intent to implement universal health coverage and they have tried to do it since, you know, several decades. And everybody gets uh equal healthcare fee at the point of delivery. And they have publicly funded through general tax payment system and it is solely controlled by public sector. Uh but uh it is a pluralistic and copy and compassing both public and private sectors. And the uh public sector provides good quality healthcare at no cost to patients from primary to secondary care. But Sri Lankans still rely heavily on the private sector for outpatient care, which involves out of pocket payments. So this is a brief situation, Sri Lanka. Then I'll also talk about India. India launched a uh uh its national flagship program of universal health coverage under the leadership of the Prime Minister, it is called Ayushman Bharat. Uh Pradharn Mantri Jan Swasthayojana, which means literally long live healthy life. Uh 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 Prime Minister's uh public health uh program. And this is what it means, health coverage up to five lakhs per family to around roughly around the seven to eight thousand dollars per year for secondary intercultural hospitalization under Ayushman Bharat program. And uh this is how it has evolved till now. Ayushman Bharat program has crossed one crore milestone. One crore people have been given free treatment under this scheme till now. And it is a commitment to cover around fifty three crore citizens and have a decision is cover up to five lakh family per year. And it will have primary and secondary care treatment at two thousand one hundred and five hundred in balance uh healthcare institutions. And uh under this scheme, over three thousand citizens were tested. This is old data, but now we have a wide coverage of uh uh COVID treatment as well as screening. And you can see our Prime Minister's image on this slide because there's highest level of political commitment for this program. And it is a completely cashless, paperless access to services for beneficiaries, both public and private hospitals. And this is uh briefly uh shows the process of availing care and that uh the universal health coverage that is evolving in the patient hospitalization, beneficiary identification registration, pre creation request and approval, treatment, discharge, claim request and settlements. This is the cycle of care and this is how it is digitally managed at the citizen level, hospitals level and the uh third party or insurance uh providers. And this is overall digital framework, universal health program. And this is the uh health ID, looks like Ayushman Bharat Aravika card. Again, uh 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 a digital uh identity card for availing this Ayushman Bharat universal health coverage program in India. And a national health agency has been established to overview and run this whole uh process. So this is briefly about uh the universal health coverage development in spite of the COVID challenges we are trying to progress. And even during COVID, the national health program, the universal healthcare program in India has given coverage for treatment of many COVID patients also. And hopefully, as we come out of the pandemic, it will have significant impact on the lives of the common people because a large uh section of the population, and we promise this, and the most populated, one of the most populated countries of the world. So thank you very much, delegates, ladies and gentlemen, for patient listening. Thanks a lot. Namaste.
Thank you very much indeed. Panelists, uh I, we having a little bit of problems connecting our last speaker, Dr. Thomas Miana. So we might uh in the interim start with questions that have come in. Uh and the first, and I do encourage you to continue to write questions in the Q and A box. Uh as we, if we can't connect Dr. Thomas, we will obviously have a little bit more time uh to ask questions of this distinguished panel and in in learn from the discussion there. So the first question, Hassan, is is for you. In your talk, you mentioned um as one of the recommendations, a regional professional diploma in family medicine. And the question is, what role do you see family medicine and the development of family medicine playing as part of the solution in delivering universal health coverage in in the Emmera region?
Thanks a lot, Amanda. Thank you. Very good question, actually. Uh, okay. We keep saying that the primary healthcare is a cornerstone to reach to universal health coverage. Talking about universal health, uh sorry, talking about the primary healthcare, it is not only about the governance or the finance or the information system. The core of the primary healthcare is the human resource development. The current situation in our region that more almost than quarter of a million of the physicians, they are generalist, they are not general practitioner, they are not a physician. Actually, the situation that ninety three percent of the public primary healthcare facilities are managed by this generalist. This current era of generalist to be responsible about the delivering of the primary healthcare, definitely it will not reach us to the universal health coverage. For sure, we need to to go for the family physician. This is a key for us to reach, to improve the the physician's capacity and to move to the uh universal health. That's why we developed already this regional professional diploma in family medicine in cooperation with Wonka and we already launched it, uh something like more than almost sixteen months ago. Then we decided to go on and to upgrade it for from one year to two years diploma and we are going to launch it in the twenty. It's Monday, twenty eighth of February is upcoming year for the twenty. Over to you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much indeed. And I wonder, um, uh Raman, if you would mind, um, if you are there, if you could turn your video on?
Uh, I'm not able to turn it on.
And and do we have Dr. Thomas now?
All right.
Ah, thank you.
Hello.
Chris, I'll hand back to you and we will continue. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much and welcome, Dr. Thomas Miana. We have gone through the Eastern Mediterranean, to Africa, to South Asia. Now we are going to the Iber Americana region, where initially we had Dr. Jacqueline Ponzo, the Wonka president for the region as a speaker. She was unable to join, but we are very happy, Dr. Thomas Miana, that you stepped in last minute. I understand that you were recommended by her. So she, I'm sure you will be an excellent expert on the uh universal health coverage struggle in your region. You have not pre recorded your presentation, so you will give it it straight on now. So I turn over to you. The floor is yours. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm so honored to be part of the of this panel. Greetings from Costa Rica. So I will chair my presentation. Well. Uh we will be talking about experiences and perspectives with Iber Americana team in the matter that we are discussing on uh universal health coverage. So we do some work before. As in the Confederation, we have um every two years, we reunite some people to uh think about the process. We reunite some people to think about the processes in the different countries of our region. Then first of all, we like to take back the the whole definition that says that people are increasingly dissatisfied with the inability of health services and health systems have to respond better and faster to the challenges of a changing world. So we in Brazil in twenty sixteen, we have the Wonka World Conference. And before that, we achieved a reunion and we discussed the universal health courage based on qualified primary healthcare. And we define that it means timely access for individuals, families and communities without restriction to the goods and services that their health conditions require. Means access for people to comprehensive and coordinated care for re-promotion, protection, assistance and recovery of health. In accordance with the needs they presented in the course of their lives. In the end, this is the very reason for being of a service and a health system. This is one of the matters that important to us in Iber American region. Our Confederation or our organization over the course of more than three decades has worked for the development of family and community medicine on primary healthcare. And to do so, we invite the others, health actors in Latin America, Spain and Portugal. And every two years, we have these, our summits. These reunions of these summits are political and technical scientific events. We exchange experiences and participatory activities with strategic representatives from the field of health, education and research. And the results are expressed in the form of a letter. Or we can say like a mole, which usually bears the name of the city which is carried out. I came with this because we in, talk about universal health coverage very deeply in the fifth summit in Quito in twenty fourteen. And family community medicine and social participation. In this, at that moment, we came with another definition of universal health coverage that we thought or we think that it suits better for the region. In spite of the universal health coverage definition as it is, we added that half or have to have the first levels of care at the axis of care with family and community doctors in the health teams. That's for ensuring the first contact, a continuous monitoring centered around the person and their family and community context in accordance with the health needs they present in the course of their lives. In this summit, we identified difficulties in achieving universal access persisting in the Iber American countries. Especially affecting the most vulnerable people, particularly indigenous, poor and rural people, as we see in other regions. Regarding the access route to universal coverage, the continued dependence on direct payments in some of our countries, including user fees, is identified as the greatest obstacle to progress. We can name an example like Costa Rica, which have a little more than ninety-five percent of universal public health coverage to Chile that has around ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of universal health coverage. But it's like sixty-five percent public and the rest is private. In twenty fourteen, only half of the countries in the American region have universal access to health system. Although in most, there are population groups without coverage. We have highly fragmented health systems. Their rights are granted, coverage and institutional arrangements vary among different groups, like I said before. We have usually organized by a combination of traditional public sector services following groups, social security services for formal employees, in some cases extends to their families. For example, Costa Rica is one of the examples, and private services for those with ability to pay. The lack of coordination between the three subsectors has been a source of inefficience and inequities. Once the fragmentation hinders the efficiency use of the resources required to achieve universal health coverage. So in the next summit in twenty sixteen, in our sixth summit, we introduce universality and universal health coverage to, as a continuum for the work that we've been doing. And we did a lot of research in the region. And we define universality as the coverage that the population has for accessing health services and fulfill their right to it. Which must be protected financially by public policies and actions of the state. And we define them also, they must have scale and intensity proportional to the needs. We watch defined by Mahmoud as proportionate universalism. Actions must be universal with a scale and intensity that is proportional to disadvantage, rather than focusing only on the most favor. Thereby articulated the definition of universality with equity. Therefore, it is necessary to recognize equitable access to health services as a human right and not a privilege for those working in the formal sector or with greater financial resources. Our countries have a lot of immigration problems. We are in continuous movement of people between our countries. In the research, we found some determinants in Latin America that limit achieve universality on the primary healthcare and in the family community medicine. Most of the people, we do this or we did this with an online survey. And most of the people think that the structure and management will be the first thing to achieve to get universality in the primary healthcare. And in the factors limiting considered by country to achieve the universality, the most of the countries also think that is structure and management. Twenty-nine percent, around twenty-nine percent report for going need care due to multiple access barriers. Seventeen attributed to organizational issues. For example, long waiting times, inappropriate hours of operation, cumbersome administrative requirements and financial barriers were reported in around fifteen percent of cases. Inadequate availability of resources like health personnel, medicines and inputs. And around eight percent of episodes and geographic barriers in five percent of the cases. Eighty percent attributed to acceptability issues. For example, language barriers, lack of trust in health personnel or being mistreated by personnel, prefer for traditional and indigenous medicine. People in the poorest wealth quintile were more likely to experience barriers related to acceptability issues, financial and geographic access and availability of resources. So we came with some conclusions to our reasons. To achieve universal coverage must act strategically in the five key actions areas of primary healthcare. Collect and disseminate information for action. Strengthening social participation, fostering skills and knowledge of the population on health. Training and capacity building of human resources. Acting interstructurally, reoriented healthcare. There are a consensus in our region that the concept of universality involves the right of the population to have access to primary healthcare and family and community medicine with comprehensive approach, integrated and continuous, regardless of socioeconomic or geographical condition of the individual, family or community. And continuous balance and structured work is necessary to ensure that those populations will let access to service reach. Staggered and well-defined money, the root process to define the scope according to the realities. And the active participation of the member of our regions in the context of development country policies to achieve improved access to services is necessary and binding. Regional strategies must be generated in which those with more experience provide a platform platform for the country's universalization, find a space of consensus on which to prepare these strategies for presentations to local governments. And thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thomas, and we can have all the panelists now with their videos on. We can address some of the questions. And again, if anybody has any other questions that they would like to ask of the panelists, please, please enter them. And we can address them in the time we have now. This question is really to all of the panel and it has come up in from the audience as well. Thomas, you mentioned the phrase universality with equity and talked about some of the issues of equity in the provision of primary healthcare and in our panel, in the questions that came from the audience, it was says, how can we address inequities within and between healthcare systems and that universal healthcare is a prerequisite? But it's not the only, but potentially inadequate goal to address health equity. And so I'd be interested in what the panel thought about that relationship between universal health coverage and health equity. So I don't know, Thomas, if you would like to start, but I'd like all the panelists perhaps to join in on that.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that to achieve universal health coverage with equity, we have to hear what the people needs first. And take that from the governments and discuss what they really need. For example, in most of the countries in our region, there have been hospitality side center distribution of the money. So primary care, and that was something that was so obvious with the COVID pandemic. In the primary care setting, we don't have a lot of resources to attend the necessities of the of the population. But if you go to the hospital, you can find the most new technology to attend the COVID patients or non-communicable diseases or whatever they need in that level. So I think that one of the best things to do is to try to get the, all the levels of attention in one route. We have, we have to build a real net that provide the right road for the people to go to the primary care level with accuracy diagnosis, access to medications and access to consulting. Or you can send them to the other levels, but always came back to the primary care setting to the follow-ups. So I think that one of the most important things to do is to have this strong net between the different levels of attention in the public setting. So the other thing is to invite the private sector to join the net. So we can assure that if you have an insurance, no matter if it's public or private insurance, you get what you really need.
Thank you. Other comments from panel members?
I think Hassan, Hassan is
Hassan has got his hand up. Thank you, thank you, Chris. Yes, Hassan, please.
Thank you, thank you very much Amanda. Yes, definitely. The three dimensions for the universal health coverage, it is mainly talking about the equity. But as Thomas mentioned, that we have to look for more comprehensive things. We are talking about nine years from now. Let us be realistic. Some of the countries, by the way, from our region, from the Eastern Mediterranean region, they already announced that no way that they are going to reach to hundred percent or to universal health coverage ended by the year of the twenty thirty. So the issue so far, which is the main challenges that facing the topic for the equity is the ministries of health capacities, they cannot deal with the topic of the universal health coverage. Why? Simply because the technical capacities for them, who will go for any ministry of health number of countries in our region, still they are lacking this technical capacity to formulate the policies. So effective universal health coverage in, I'm talking about my region at least. This is the most important thing. Over to you. Thank you for giving me the chance.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, perhaps I can respond as well. Thanks, if you don't mind. You know, I think equity is an unreachable goal. It's something we have to do, it's an ideal. But I think there's never such a thing as all of us being equal at some day. It's just never going to happen. But I think it's an important thing to always ask who's less privileged and how do we constantly address that problem and aim in that direction. I think in countries, there's a huge problem in, and particularly I think in low middle income countries, for there to move away from this very bureaucratic approach of managing government, which creates public services are unresponsive, don't account for the private sector and doesn't bring all of the different stakeholders together in that way or providers together to actually look at the best possible outcome for the populations. And I think that WHO is pushing by suggesting these kinds of approaches, bringing the public service, private sector, public into together into nationally funded insurance systems that will create panels and that will manage populations and that's the kind of drive. And I think that is certainly something that doesn't need to be overly technically. I think technically in its management, it can be done simply. And I think there are good enough instances across the world of that being done fairly simply. I think the other problem with equity I have is that in the globe, we have seven trillion of health spend across the world. And many of us sit here in different health systems and don't realize that only two and a half percent, if only two and a half percent of that were to be redistributed to people of need, that we would actually solve the global problem of universal coverage to primary of care. Add another two and a half percent and the full range would be addressed. Of course, the question will, what is that, what is that range of universal coverage? And I think it tends to be something which one can say in the current terminology is relatively basic. But it shows the inequity in our globe. I think COVID itself has shown just how the rich just do not bother when it's survival to think about anybody but themselves. And I think we as an organization of family doctors need to ask ourselves, which side of this equation are we on?
Thank you, very rousing words, Shabir. I think that almost draws us to the clip, to the end. But one of the things that we noted during the presentations was that COVID has been a huge challenge. And a number of you, you mentioned the amount of money and the demands that emergency care had. But some of you also said that COVID had actually shown in your regions the importance of primary care. And I just wondered if anybody wants to comment on that potential tension and what COVID has shown us in the role of primary care and obviously in the context of universal coverage. And obviously in the context of universal coverage. Yes, Hassan, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks again, Amanda. Uh, during the first waves, by the way, about the COVID nineteen, the health system attention was almost more than ninety, but almost a hundred percent toward hospital care. And completely ignoring the primary healthcare, I'm talking again about our our vision. And all the budget, all the attention, all the human resources, everything goes toward the hospital care. Keep saying that there is no any role for the for the primary healthcare in this. I discussed the issue, this is back almost to March or April, I discussed this issue with the whole partners for the primary healthcare in our region, and this is including, of course, the Wonka, UNICEF, UNIP, UNHCR and the Arab Board of Health Specializations. And we found that the main reason for this, because there is no clear functions for the primary healthcare. That's why we developed an online training about the role of the primary healthcare. And we disseminated in joint collaboration with our partners and for the first time ever for the WHO and for the primary healthcare partners, we reached to the registration of almost more than ninety thousand primary healthcare from our region, they registered for this. We moved to the next step and we decided to make an a kind of any evaluation and to get kind of what kind of impact for this online training. We received and a feedback from the primary healthcare physician said that this kind of online training, they gave us the strength for how to deal with the primary healthcare with the core function during the the COVID. So my point is that at the beginning of this pandemic, that there was no clear functions for the primary healthcare. So having kind of clear deliverable things like this online training, definitely it was very useful. Thank you again for giving me that.
Thank you, thank you. We're almost out of time, but I'll just give our last two panelists very, very brief couple of words on on this. So, uh, Thomas first and then Ramon.
Thank you, Amanda. Well, in primary care in our region, COVID, it has a lot of tension because of the follow-ups. Uh, the, we, in most of our countries, there were telephone follow-ups or uh, video calls to follow us in in, uh, housekeeping or house, uh, care of the of the patients with COVID. But not not only with COVID, we are also so concerned about the next pandemic. You know, the non-communicable diseases and the other stuff that we are have to face right now. So the all the diabetic people and hypertension and and everything that is out of control right now because of the COVID.
Thank you, and a brief comment, Ramon?
I think during pandemic, the first wave, there was more focus primarily because of the bureaucratic preference to focus on hospitals, because it was easier to, you know, quarantine and hospitalize in that sense. But during the second wave, which was very huge in a region, uh, everybody realized that the, you know, hospital approach of dealing with pandemics cannot, you know, uh, solve the problems and overwhelming towards the, you know, as the second wave rose, more and more realization was for primary care and access to, you know, a basic medical advice was very, very valuable, uh, because, you know, nobody was there to do anything. No hospital beds, no oxygen, nothing available. And that was exhausted, people realized that it was time for home care and then it moved towards home care, community-based management. Even the vaccination started with selected selective hospitals and then it moved into the community, to schools and to community health centers and to community setting. But it has given a message.
Thank you, I think that's, that's a very nice phrase to end on, it has given a message. So I would just like to thank you all very much for the messages that you have given us about universal health coverage in the region. Um, the challenges and and the successes and recommendations for way forward that very much involve um, family medicine and family physicians. So thank you all very much, um, and that closes the session.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much and see you all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.